This is the Southfield City Council Regular Meeting, conducted via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks? Brightwell?
Here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum? Mandelbaum? Morris? Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
President.
Madam President, you do have a quorum, and it looks like Councilman Mandelbaum just joined us. So we will excuse Councilwoman Morris. It doesn't look like she's joined us. Oh, this may be her. Councilwoman Morris, is that you? Is that you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
So Mandelbaum and Morris is here, Madam President. We do have a quorum, and the mayor and a host of other departments here are on the line as well.
Thank you very much. Councilman Hoskins, would you please say the Pledge of Allegiance for us tonight?
I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we have presentations. Mayor Cyver? Oh, is Mayor Cyver with us?
I'm sorry. I'm with you. Good evening, Council. Tonight, I'm bringing forth a joint mayor and city council resolution in appreciation of Mitch Simon, who has been a long, long time volunteer for the city of Southfield. Madam President, if it's with your permission, I'll read the resolution.
Yes, please.
Whereas Mitchell Simon has been an outstanding resident of the city of Southfield for more than 30 years. And whereas Mitchell has established himself very early through his graduate classes and hard work and very successful career as a certified public accountant. And whereas Mitchell was a very active, has been very active in the community. And in 1988, he became one of the founding members of COSA, our Commission on Senior Adults, and served as the chairperson, vice-chairperson, and was part of the various committees to enhance the well-being of seniors in the city of Southfield, including the ARP Age Friendly Community Designation. Mitchell was a loyal and dedicated member of the commission for 30 years, resigning in 2020. Whereas Mitchell has found his way back to his passion, accounting, bookkeeping. And in 2014, he became an active member and treasurer of the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Commission and the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, and spent many hours, well beyond anyone's expectations, to keep accurate accounting of the commission's funds and investments. And whereas Mitchell has consistently demonstrated his commitment as a board member and his ability to work collaboratively in a very diverse group of board members, Mitchell never shied away from asking the critical questions needed to clarity and closure regarding important decisions. And whereas Mitchell is to be recognized and commended as a faithful servant of the city of Southfield as he resigns from COSA, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, the SNRI, and begins a new chapter of his life with family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby recognize and show our sincere appreciation to Mitchell Simon for his years of volunteer service and commitment to the city of Southfield. And we encourage Southfield residents to join us in congratulating and celebrating Mitchell for all of his significant contributions and for a job very well done. Dated the 19th of January 2021. And this resolution will be in my office. When council members have an opportunity, please step in and sign it, should you approve the resolution this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and definitely congratulations to you, Mr. Simon. Council, I'll come to you for comments, and I'll start with you, Ms. Banks.
I have no comments. I just would like to say thank you to Mr. Simon for his many years of dedicated service to these boards and also the city.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I have no additional comments, but since I've been on council, I've heard good things about Mr. Simon and appreciate your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No additional comments. Just want to thank Mr. Simon as well. And I'll be glad to be in support of this once everyone has an opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, I think I echo everything my colleagues have been saying, would say a thanks to Mr. Simon for all his service to the city of Southfield.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. Mitchell, congratulations. I know we've had the pleasure of working together on the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Board for the last five years together, so I definitely know how involved you are as a volunteer. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I definitely hope you enjoy your retirement and get to play lots of tennis.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Simon, for your many years of service to the city of Southfield, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. Okay, Council, I need your approval or...
Madam President?
Yes. Councilman Cruz?
I'd like to move that we accept the joint resolution as presented by the mayor of Mr. Mitchell Simon.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the joint resolution for Mr. Mitchell Simon. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Presentation of joint resolution for Mitchell Simon recognition has been approved.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next two items are yours as well for appointments.
Yes, thank you, Council, for approving that resolution for Mitchell Simon. Again, when you have the opportunity, I'd like you to come in and sign it. We plan to frame it as a keepsake for Mitchell's years and years of service. This evening, we've had, as you may recall, in December, we appointed two people to the Downtown Development Authority. We've had some turnover on that board. So this evening, I have two more appointments to the DDA. And with these appointments, upon your approval, we will then have a full contingent for our DDA board. So I'm asking for the approval of the appointment of Dr. Stephen Craig. Dr. Craig works for the Surgeon's Choice Medical Center on Foster Winter Drive. This building has been renamed, revitalized, next to Providence Hospital. And Surgeon's Choice Medical Center is now in the building and obviously a key stakeholder in the DDA. Also, another key stakeholder in the DDA is Guardian Alarm. And our former president of Guardian Alarm retired, I think in November. And he's been replaced by Brent Yule. And I'm asking for your approval to appoint both of these gentlemen to the DDA board. I believe they may be on the lot.
Okay. Mr. Craig or Mr. Yule, are either of you on the line? Okay, hearing none, I'll go to you, Council.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Dr. Stephen Craig and Brent Yule to the Downtown Development Authority.
Support, Councilwoman Banks.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the appointment to the Downtown Development Authority of both Dr. Stephen Craig and Brent Yule. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Appointment to the Downtown Development Authority for Dr. Stephen Craig and Brent Yule has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Madam Chair, if I could, through the chair, ask the mayor a quick question.
Yes, Councilman Cruz.
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering, I know you said we have a full committee now, but has OCC been approached at all to be a member of this group? I know in the past, we've had Dr. Dave Adams and Dr. Steve Reeve. Both were presidents of the campus, of the Southfield campus. Have we heard anything from them or reached out to them?
Yes, we have. Matter of fact, council approved the appointment of Elizabeth Ray to the DDA board, I think in December.
I do remember that. I'm sorry. Yes.
As you know, Ms. Ray worked for, was our city attorney for a year, and then was recruited by OCC to be their attorney. So we thought she would be a perfect fit for the DDA board, and she accepted the invitation. So OCC is well represented.
All right, thank you. Again, to the chair, my apologies. I do remember when we made that appointment. And you're right, she would be good for that position, especially given the amount of land that we have over there. Now, I guess I got my OCC hat on right now, but I just want to make sure that we're having some kind of dialogue with the college and moving that area forward. So, thank you.
Absolutely, no problems at all. Thank you. Next, Council, we have two sets of minutes. One from the Committee of the Whole of December 7, 2020, and the Regular Meeting of December 14, 2020.
Madam President?
Yes.
So Cruz, I'd like to move the approval of the Committee of the Whole meeting on December 7, 2020, and the Regular Meeting of December 14, 2020.
Support, Councilwoman Banks. And I'd just like to add that the Regular Meeting of December 14, 2020, there was a set of minutes that were presented this afternoon. That's the one that we're approving.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the Committee of the Whole meeting of December 7, and approval of the Regular Minutes of December 14, 2020. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Minutes, Committee of the Whole minutes of December 7, 2020 approved, and the Regular Meeting minutes of December 14, the most recent version is approved.
Thank you. Next, we have our Consent Agenda. We have Items A through J. Council, do you have any questions or anything you want pulled from the agenda before we go for the acceptance?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
I'd like Item I pulled.
Okay. Anyone else?
Councilwoman Banks?
Yes.
I'd just like noted that there is a new letter for Consent Agenda A that was sent to everyone. That is the item that we will be approving, not what was in the packet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Brightwell?
I can make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda items A through J excluding I is pulled. And also, I make mention the fact that we did get new Item A, which dealt with the Beechwood roof.
Support, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of consented agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and J. Council, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Consent agenda items, as noted, A through J excluding I, has been adopted. Madam President, can we, just to clarify, can I get again who made the motion and is supported for that consent agenda, please?
Yes, Brightwell. Councilman Brightwell made the motion, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Now to Item I, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. I know that we discussed this at our last Committee of the Whole, and it was discussed at the Finance Committee. And I just want to mention again that I have concerns about constantly extending this contract for audit services with Plant Moran without continuing to do an RFP. I've given numerous reasons, one of which, you know, I feel that sometimes auditors get too cozy. There may be other Southfield-based companies that may be interested. But, you know, having a 10-year audit contract with the same company, to me, just doesn't sit well without going out for bid. So I just, I wanted that noted, that I understand in these trying times with the pandemic, going through an RFP process gets very tricky, especially something with this amount of detail as our audit contract. But I still feel that we should be working towards an RFP.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion that we move this forward?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Cruz. I'd like to move approval of the Audit Service Contract with Plant Moran, Item I.
Support.
Councilwoman Morris?
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for us to accept and move forward the Audit Service Contract to Plant Moran. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
No.
Morris?
Yes.
The Audit Service Contract for Plant Moran has been approved.
Thank you very much. Next, we have no public hearings. We do have site plan, and I will defer to our planner Terry Crowe for Item A. I believe you're asking for it to be postponed to a date certain of February 22.
That is correct. Thank you. So we're asking the council to postpone to a date certain PSP 20-0012 until your regular meeting on February 22.
Okay. Council?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we postpone PSP 20-0012 Site Plan Review Request of Yukon Building and Land Development on behalf of the owner Kiwi Hospitality to the February 22 regular council meeting.
Support, Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz for the postponement of PSP 20-0012 to a date certain of February 22, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
Site Plan PSP 20-0012 postponed until February 22, 2021. Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Yep, thank you through the chair. Our next item is Site Plan, which is part of PZR ODD 20-0001 on behalf of Contour Development. Next slide, please. Next slide. So you recall, this is the former Northland site, Northland Center site on, I'm sorry. We already, next slide. This was the Yukon. We're just acting, there we are. Okay, thank you. So the site is approximately 78.12 acres. Council has already approved and introduced the zoning amendment, which will be enacted later today. They were just deficient on a few items for site plan approval last month, so we are back here tonight to consider the site plan. They have submitted the documents that were missing. Next slide. Again, this, we'll go through this quickly because we've seen this a number of times. These are existing conditions. Next slide. This is the phasing that's proposed with Phase 1A, the development of the mixed-use commercial residential along Greenfield Road, and partial demolition of the existing Northland Center with some redevelopment as part of Phase 1B. Next slide. Existing site conditions from Greenfield. Next slide. And this is the overall master redevelopment plan, which the site plan has to be consistent with the conditions of the master development plan that was approved by council. Next slide. Again, this is part of Phase 1B, the Hudson City Market Proposal. Next slide. And this is a little more detail on the site plan. Next slide. Elevations of the proposed buildings. Next slide. And then here are some detailed landscaping plans for the various phases along Greenfield. Next slide. And landscaping, streetscape furnishings that will establish the design palette for the rest of the development. Next slide. And then the city had previously adopted some design standards for screening along the periphery of the boundary of the Northland Center. This again will be the first phase of that development. Next slide. And some additional details on the monument entrance. Next slide. The water tower is still being refined, but it is the intent of the developer to keep the water tower, rebrand it, and this will go through the Arts Commission process for a recommendation before it's finalized. Next slide. And with that, I'll turn it over. I believe Bruce is on the line with maybe one other associate. If you want any questions or comments you'd like to make at this time, and then we'd be happy to entertain questions from council. Thank you. Bruce, you need to unmute yourself.
There we go. I had to be unmuted. So I'm certainly willing to take any questions at this point.
Okay, thank you. If you have no comments, I'll turn it over to council.
Sure thing.
Okay.
I think I've seen this multiple times, and my only comment is just a general one, that we are really interested in making this, you know, world-class development. And we've got a lot of interest from outside. It's been in the papers, and it's moving along very well as far as we're concerned. So you can see some change coming on that site, I believe, in the shortest possible time.
Thank you for that. Councilman Brightwell?
Basically, like you said, we've seen this numerous times. I have no additional comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I have no additional comments.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me, and I keep getting more and more excited about this development as we keep seeing it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe?
At this time, we are recommending approval of the site plan subject to the resolution that was part of your packet. And ultimately, they will have to meet the requirements of the overlay development district.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Like to make a motion that we approve Phase 1 Site Plan as part of the ODD for PZR ODD 20-0001.
Support, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of Phase 1 Site Plan, PZR ODD 20-0001. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Support.
It's a yes or no vote, sir?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Phase 1 Site Plan, part of PZR ODD 20-001, has been approved.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments for this project or no? Anyone else on the call? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, we'll go to the next, which is Communications.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, I didn't have any comments, but during the discussion of Item I, during the consent, since I'm the Finance Chair, and I don't want individuals to think I advocated my support for that project, but my instrument, my computer, just went silent. So I didn't want the public, anyone, to think that I did not have, I was not supporter of that item during the discussion. But my electronics went silent. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
No problem, thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum, would you keep the time for us again?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the call?
Madam President, we did unmute all of the attendees list, so the individuals can speak freely at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Madam President, tonight, I wish to talk about Section 11.18, 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. Section 11.18 is entitled Amendments, which describes how to amend the Southfield City Charter by legislative initiative in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step Michigan state law, known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of 1909, thus making Section 11.18 null and void. 11.18 became null and void way back in 1958, when the Southfield founding fathers attempted to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the initial Southfield City Charter. That's when the nine members of the then Charter Commission mistakenly deleted the second step in a two-step process. State law mandates, yesterday and today, that there be two, two steps. That is, it takes two mandatory steps to amend the Southfield City Charter by legislative initiative. State mandatory step number one. The Southfield City Council, that's you folks, must first of all pass a proposed charter introductory amendment. And then the next step, mandatory step number two. The Southfield voters, that's us folks, must pass by ballot election council-proposed charter initiatory amendment. Unfortunately, 11.18 totally deletes state mandatory step number two, the ballot election. In a word, after 63 years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do yourself a felicitous favor and fix Section 11.18. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Is there anyone else?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Okay, I wanted to start off by saying to all of the residents and the people in the city of Southfield that remembered six years ago today, I lost the first man that I ever loved, my father. I appreciate your calls and your text messages and the answering machine messages that I did not get to. I thank you so much on behalf of me, my husband, and my family. I'm just so honored and humble that you thought of me and that you remembered. Okay, so now let's get down to the city business. I'm trying to figure out why the city of Southfield doesn't do a better job trying to get other vendors to provide those services. Plant Moran and I like Plant Moran, I like the people there. They have been doing city audits for a very, very long time. And I think that having the same people to do the audit would mean that it's not going to be an unbiased audit. I think that it goes well because it's the same company every year. I want to see the city work a little harder at going out and doing their job to get other people to bid on this contract. If you're already going to allow Plant Moran to do it, then it's no point to even do a bid contract. Just say, "Go ahead and do the audit." I want to remind you of something that happened in a different place, in Dixon, Illinois, several years ago, when the controller, and they had part-time mayor, part-time city council people, a lady single-handedly stole $53 million, putting the municipal money in all of these accounts that no one knew about other than her. Now, I know we've got some funny name accounts, and we've got all of these little funds set up. And not to say that the city of Southfield could use a forensic audit, but I'm just keeping in mind what happened in Dixon, Illinois. It also happened in another city where the money was just not being watched or the services were not being watched. And those cities successfully sued the audit companies that said it was nothing wrong with the finances, when in fact it was. So let's try to get some new vendors, some new blood. This is a new year. Happy Kwanzaa Hanukkah New Year to all the residents in the city of Southfield and to our personnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam President, I do believe that that concludes our communication portion of the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Madam President. Councilmembers, mayor, and other department heads. I wanted to help Mr. Mullin to understand the objection that he mentions regarding Section 11.18 of our charter. And the first thing I wanted to mention is, in our charter, it says there are two ways that we can amend the charter, a three-fifth vote of the members-elect of the council or by an initiatory petition. And this is all provided for in Public Act 279, which is the Home Rule City Act. If you go to Section 21 of the Home Rule City Act, it says, again, an amendment to an existing city charter, whether the charter was adopted under this act or formally granted or passed by the legislature for the government of the city, which would be our city council, may be proposed, as we have in our charter, by the legislative body of the three-fifth vote of the council or by an initiatory petition. And then at that point, either way you do it, whether by the three-fifth vote or by the petition, it shall be submitted to the electors of the city at the next regular municipal or general state election or at a special election. And then it goes on to, say, within so many days after proposing the amendment, then also for the petition, the same thing. Shall be submitted to the electors of the city at the next regular municipal or general state election, since this was 90 days after the filing of the petition. So to answer Mr. Mullins', or address Mr. Mullins' concern, we are doing everything we're supposed to. And if he really wants to understand it, he should go to the Michigan Legislative website and look at Section 21 of the Home City Act. And he will see that our charter does comply with the state law.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Council, now we're at the council portion. We'll start with you, Councilwoman Morris.
Well, I would like to congratulate the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Task Force on 36 years of serving our community, participating in the Drive for Justice Car Parade yesterday. And it was wonderful. Also got a chance to watch the virtual program. I'd just like to thank them for all their many years of service in our community.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a very Happy New Year. Hopefully, it will be a great one for all of us. I also would like to echo and thank the Martin Luther King Jr. coordinators of the program yesterday. It was a different event, but extremely well-attended. I thought someone said there were like 160 cars that were participating in the event. We participated in the parade, and it was just a wonderful feeling to see so many people attend. The organizers did a wonderful job in organizing the cars, and thank you. Also, I'd like to thank the Oakland County Youth Assistance Program for the report that they submitted to us for 2019. Usually, 2000, I'm sorry, for 2020. Usually, we get together this time of year to celebrate their accomplishments. And just a few facts. The Youth Assistant Casework Service Program serviced 5,053 families. Volunteers dedicated 42,234 hours to strengthening families within Southfield and Oakland County. 2,620 adults and 3,876 young people attended family educational programs. 5,764 youth were given an opportunity to participate in tutoring, recreation, skill-building, and camp experiences. And 1,336 young people were honored for their volunteer commitment to organizations all across Oakland County. In total, 44,908 children, youth, and adults participated in the Youth Assistance Community Program. And I think they deserve a thank you and congratulations. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I want to also thank the, and also applaud the Martin Luther King Task Force for such a fantastic event yesterday. There were actually, I'm the financial manager for the MLK Task Force, and there were 183 cars that registered to participate in the event. And the financial support that the community has given MLK Task Force in the past, it was all, that financial support was equal this particular year. And that was a big concern. So I just want to thank the community. And also, obviously, thank all the volunteers in the MLK for putting all this event. And they had a gigantic food giveaway. We had food there for 250 families. And we also had support from Bees and Combrett that provided hard food, hot food for some of the ones who drove in the event. But on to another item. I want to thank our Department of Public Works and also Mr. Zorn, because about a month ago, I had asked that we put something in the water bill that deals with flushable wipes. We spent a lot of money unclogging our pipes. And there was, in my water bill this particular month, there was a pamphlet there that saved our sewer system from flushable wipes. And I want to commend them for providing that pamphlet to the residents that explains in very minute detail the problem we have with flushable wipes. And I think the most recent bill we had, I think, was $82,000. We had to spend several months ago, perhaps the early part of last year, unclogging the pipes that are clogged up because of flushable wipes. So if, hopefully, everyone's water bill got a copy of that pamphlet, please spend some time in going through it, because I cringe every time we have to spend money to unclog our pipes because of things that should go into the waste can for garbage. One other item, Madam Chair. As some of you know, my background is public, private finance, and I chaired a finance committee. And we had a resident just a minute ago speak on the financial records of the city. And I just want to make sure that I don't want any resident to feel uncomfortable with the city of Southfield and how we maintain our records and how we keep our records straight. Any accounting firm, I've dealt with eight accounting firms, and right now, I think is the big five. I've dealt with Arthur Andersen, Price Waterhouse, Ernst &amp; Young, Deloitte, and Trish over my professional career. Back in 2002, there was a big event, which was a big company called Enron. Arthur Andersen, which was a $9.3 billion accounting firm at the time, they went out of business because of what they did with Enron. Now, the government, the SEC, and I think it was the Federal Trade Commission in or the SEC, and the Supreme Court got involved in that. So accounting firms are on notice about doing anything that is unethical and/or wrong. And as most of us know, CPAs and partners in these accounting firms, they make a lot of money. They put a lot of food on tables, so they do not willingly, the ones I've dealt with, they do not willingly want to lose their license to be an accountant. That's about losing your license to be a lawyer. They make good money in falsifying some records. At least the individuals I've dealt with, they follow their ethics very clearly and very succinctly. They are not going to lose their livelihood and/or lose their child's college fund, falsifying some records for a company or for a city. So it makes me cringe as a finance person. I know we have ethics, we have integrity. All my life, I had to use accountants' records and numbers. From a finance standpoint, finance people use the records of accountants. And so, and I have always had faith in those numbers and faith that the individuals who are providing those numbers are ethical. So, and dealing with the city, our records are checked frequently. And we, Southfield has a very unique checks and balance system. And I know this because, based on some history before I became on council. So we, from our investment and the tracking of our dollars, we have a checker that checks the checker. We have outside checkers who are like a retainer. They go over our investment items. So if the signal was sent out that we would tolerate, just from individuals on the finance side of the house, that we would tolerate anyone falsifying our records, or if we look for anyone that would perform those kind of functions, that is not true. We look for the fact that we want people to realize our records are transparent, and that we do have internal checkers that check the checker. So the citizens should realize that we take very seriously the fiduciary duty of taking care of the taxpayer dollars. And I've been beholden to that all my professional life. And so it just makes me cringe a little bit that it would be put forth that we would allow anyone in the city of Southfield, on the financial side of the house, to play with our numbers and to present something falsely to what the investors in the city and also our citizens. Okay, Madam Chair, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I too want to just give my appreciation for Martin Luther King Jr. Task Force. In a time like these, we could have very easily just thought to cancel for this year or something or another. But, you know, the minds that we have together in that particular group put their heads together and came up uh, put their heads together and came up with, um, a, uh, an alternative that continued this city to, um, recognize, um, Dr. King, which is a wonderful thing. And, uh, for what he represented, which was many great things, one which being peace. Uh, looking forward tomorrow to a peaceful transfer of power, uh, in the White House. And so I just pray for us and in this city and in this country that, um, as we get a new president, uh, number one, that there will, uh, that it will be a peaceful transition. And number two, that, uh, some new things might come to bear that will, uh, make, hate to use the term, make this country great. And I'll leave you again off, just make it great, uh, because we are great and this city is great. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Banks, you had another comment?
Yes, thank you. I also wanted to remind the public that, um, the COVID shots are being provided daily. However, um, you have to be registered. So, um, please take the time, seek the help of your, um, family, your friends, if you are not computer literate, um, because it seems like the hot, with the hospitals, you have to be registered on your MyChart. So you may want to contact your doctor's office to find out, um, how to do that. Also, um, please go to the Oakland County website and save a spot. So when vaccines become available, you will be notified. Myers also ha- is starting a signup program. So you have an opportunity to, um, sign up at Myers. And also you may want to check with your, um, local drugstores to see when they may be getting the vaccines in and if you can get on a list. Um, you know, in order for us to open up, you know, our state of Michigan, you know, we need to get, um, vaccinated. And, you know, if you, um, are interested in it, just please remember that you've got to sign up. They're not going to call you, you're going to have to, um, get on the list so they will call you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. And to, to kind of just piggyback off of what, uh, Councilwoman Banks said, uh, to focus specifically on the, the Oakland County, uh, Oak- Oakland County's vaccine program. Um, the information about saving, uh, your spot, uh, you can sign up, uh, online, uh, is for the people who are el- who are currently eligible and interested in receiving the, uh, uh, the COVID-nineteen vaccine. Yeah. And that, those are the people who are healthcare workers or residents that are sixty-five years or older or, uh, frontline workers, like, uh, police officers, uh, or first responders, um, and teachers. Um, so any of those, any of those people can, uh, sign up at OaklandCountyVaccine.com uh, and be able to, uh, save their spot and they'll get a notification once a, a vaccine is, uh, available to them. And of course, if you can't, um, go to the website for whatever reason, uh, you can always call. Uh, you can call at one-eight-hundred-eight-four-eight-five-five-three-three. Uh, again, that's one-eight-hundred-eight-four-eight-five-five-three-three. Um, and you can again go to OaklandCountyVaccine.com. Uh, and there'll be a form there that you can fill out as well. Um, and I also want to just echo what a lot of my colleagues, uh, have said about the great work of the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Task Force. Uh, they put on a great event, uh, uh, yesterday and, um, they found a lot of unique ways to still be able to celebrate the legacy of, of Dr. King. And we, you know, of course, definitely appreciate that and need that. Um, uh, and this time, as, as Councilman Cruz pointed out, um, and as he also, as Councilman Cruz also pointed out, we're, uh, hope, hopefully have a very peaceful transition of power, uh, tomorrow. Uh, um, I'm very much looking forward to the fact that today is the last day that I will be able to say that a woman or a person of color has never served as Vice President of the United States. Um, so I'm very much looking forward to celebrating that tomorrow. Um, I hope that you all stay safe. Um, hopefully with this new, uh, transition of power, there will be much, many more things available to us, um, maybe a new perspective on how to get the vaccine to our communities faster. Um, and I'm very much looking forward to, uh, the future of our country. Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. Um, I also want to echo what my colleagues have said about yesterday's Martin Luther King Junior Task Force, uh, parade. It was, it was definitely, I, I was definitely glad that they, uh, found a way to make it work with the current situation. And also the programming that we had on, uh, Cable Fifteen all day, um, with past programming was also very nice, um, as well. Uh, I also, um, want to remind everyone that the Parks and Rec Department is, uh, definitely trying new ways, uh, to keep people, um, entertained and in shape. They have weekly walks at different parks, you have to sign up, um, or call the Parks and Rec Desk. They go to different parks and trails, um, I believe on Saturdays. And it's just a nice way to get out and experience, uh, all the beauty that Southfield has to offer. So other than that, again, please, please be safe. Um, and I'm looking forward to some great festivities tomorrow as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would just echo all of my, uh, colleagues in saying thank you to the Martin Luther King Task, Task Force as well as, uh, uh, contacting Oakland County so that you can, uh, get on the waiting list for the vaccine. Stay safe, everyone. Um, next we have the, um, Mayor, um, with any comments?
Yes, good evening. I, I appreciate the comments from, um, Councilwoman, uh, Banks and, uh, Councilman Hoskins regarding the vaccine. Uh, we've had a number of people call the city, uh, wondering if the city can, um, uh, jump the line, uh, or, um, use some influence to, um, uh, get them a shot. And, um, there is no such thing and the city has no control over, uh, while we are hosting a vac- uh, a vaccination site. Um, it's all done through Oakland County and people have to call the county, uh, to, um, get an appointment, uh, or, uh, the Beaumont Service Center is also, um, doing inoculations. I drove by there today, uh, there was quite a line of, uh, people. Uh, but as has been mentioned, um, you have to be in, uh, an eligible, uh, group. And clearly, um, Southfield did not let a pandemic, uh, keep us from observing, uh, Martin Luther King. Uh, as has been mentioned by all, uh, it was a, um, a great program yesterday. I give special kudos to Dorothy Dean, who did a lot of, a lot of work on the, uh, along with a host of volunteers. But, uh, Dorothy really spearheaded the, um, efforts for the, for the parade. Um, and then, uh, a lot of thanks goes to our Police Department, our Fire Department, our Public Works Department, and, um, obviously our emergency management, uh, emergency prepared, uh, uh, um, staff as, um, uh, we had people out in force to make sure that, um, the parade, uh, was safe and, uh, that everyone got, um, through the route. And then, uh, also, uh, conducting the, uh, the food giveaway. Um, it, uh, Southfield really, uh, shown yesterday and, um, I think we're all very appreciative of all of the, um, coordinated, um, and collaborative efforts, uh, to make, um, the Thirty-Sixth Annual Martin Luther King Day in Southfield celebration, uh, unique and very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next we have Administration?
Thank you, Madam President. Most of the items on my checklist have been mentioned. MLK event was, was a great event. I'd like to thank emergency, uh, preparedness, police, fire, public works. The committee did a phenomenal job, uh, as a parent. It, it was a good family event and, uh, was able to educate my children. And we got a lot of work to do as the past year has demonstrated, uh, for us as a country. Um, hopefully, uh, tomorrow is a new beginning in, uh, the right direction. I want to remind the public that City Hall will, uh, continue to be remained closed until February first, following, uh, orders, uh, from the state of, of Michigan. I believe we're able to transact just about every item of business. Uh, my, my team here has just been phenomenal in making sure that, uh, residents' needs are being met and, uh, still taking care of the, uh, people's business. The, uh, pandemic, uh, we continue to do our ca- our calls on Mondays and Thursdays of each week. Uh, sporadically, we usually have, um, is, you know, two to three people out on quarantine or who've tested positive or are waiting for tests. I, I think that number has gone as high as, as five. Want to remind people to continue to be diligent as it has been indicated. We are doing everything, uh, to make sure that, uh, Southfield becomes a center for vaccines. The mayor has mentioned what Beaumont Hospital is doing. Again, you need to register through Beaumont. Oakland County Health Department is here on Tuesdays and, uh, Saturdays, uh, for inoculation. Again, you need to be registered with the Oakland County Health System. Those links can be found on the city's, uh, website. Uh, we are in a dialogue with Providence about increasing their footprint, uh, in, in, in the Southfield beyond what they're doing at, at the hospital. Um, in particular, the, the pavilion is being discussed. As, uh, Councilwoman Banks mentioned, Myers is a vaccine, uh, providing vaccines to people who are in their pharmaceutical system and their databases, people over age sixty-five. Uh, I know you can register, uh, for that, that system i- i- as well. Um, that's all I have, uh, this evening. Uh, you know, continue to, uh, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Madam Attorney, we have an ordinance to be introduced?
Yes, good evening again, Madam President and Councilmembers. Pursuant to the discussion with, uh, the four city councils last week on January eleventh, as well as the legislative committee in December, it was a consensus of the city council. I'm at the committee of the whole meeting on January eleventh. I've attached a proposed ordinance that would amend Title Twelve Cable Communications by amendment chapter one sixty-eight, small cells wireless facility to the Southfield City Code. Uh, as we discussed last week, this ordinance allows the city, uh, to regulate the placement of the smallest wireless facilities and public rights away are complying with the state and federal laws addressing the same. Um, as was discussed last week, there was a consensus to move this, uh, ordinance amendment board uh, for final consideration at this meeting. So I am seeking approval and introduction of ordinance seventeen thirty-one.
Thank you, Council.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I make a motion that we introduce ordinance number one-seven-three-one.
Do I have a support?
Support. This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks, I have a question, please.
Uh, question?
Yes. Um, last week at our meeting, didn't we discuss that we were going to check to see if we could increase the rate, uh, the money that they were going to pay us? Um, I notice it's still at thirty dollars or maybe it was at twenty-five and twenty-thirty. Um, um, Madam Attorney, can you, um, were, were we gonna, weren't we gonna research that and try to increase that dollar amount?
If I may, Madam President to the Chair, the discussion we had last week was, uh, referencing as far as rates. There was a request to look into what DTE, um, is being paid. But the rates in this ordinance are subject to the Public Act three-sixty-five. So that is what the state has, um, required us to charge these small, I'm sorry, not small cell wireless facilities, but wireless providers. So that is, um, set by the state, Public Act three-sixty-five. But there was a request to look into what the, um, providers were paying to DTE, which is going to take, uh, a lot of, uh, legal legwork to do. But the ordinance, as it's presented, reflects what is required of us out of Public Act three-sixty-five. So that where we can get something because the state and the federal government, they're more favoring these, uh, wireless providers. So this sets a standard, you know, and hopefully things will get better. But right now, we need to have something placed so they don't come in and say, we don't have an ordinance and we got something better, which could be nothing. But that's what we addressed as far as doing the further research was what were they paying DTE to use their poles when they put small cell wireless facilities on their poles?
Okay, I apologize. I thought we said we were going to try to increase our rate, um, um, so I apologize.
Well, no, actually, I said, actually, um, Councilwoman Banks, at the legislative committee, we had a deeper discussion about their, with the ways to do some things, but it takes a lot of legal legwork. And I am on the protest board, um, now, so I will have more information and have a greater access to how we can, I don't want to use the word fight, but we can come against the big, uh, wireless providers who want to push our authority, you know, at the bottom of the top pole when it comes to receiving money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor where it was motioned by, uh, Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for the introduction of ordinance number one-seven-three-one. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Morris? Uh, I think she might be, let me see. Morris, are you there? I see you.
Yes.
Okay. Yep, I can hear you now.
Yep, okay, great, thank you.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen thirty-one, um, introduced.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we go to, uh, Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, just, uh, briefly, I just want to, um, recognize and, and today was a national day of mourning as our country, um, we reached the grand milestone of four hundred thousand deaths with, uh, the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So definitely want to keep, uh, all those who have lost someone to, uh, COVID in our thoughts and in our prayers, um, and continue to, uh, pray that we can move forward in expediting this vaccine, um, so that we don't have to lose, uh, any additional lives. And just a reminder to the public that, uh, through the Open Meetings Act, uh, through March the thirty-first, uh, we will still be having, um, our meetings conducted via WebEx unless, uh, something changes before then. Um, and if you have any questions or concerns about that, uh, you can always visit our website, uh, www.cityofsouthfield.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer?
Good evening, Madam President and, uh, members of council. Uh, this evening I bring before you the annual update for our depository resolution and, uh, the changes in the financial world, uh, our investment, uh, uh, list of, uh, banks and, uh, brokerage firms have also had to update on an annual basis. And, uh, we have two banks that we, uh, had mergers and, uh, so we need to delete them from our previous list. First, uh, two are Chemical Bank and Hans Bank. our previous list. First, two are Chemical Bank and Hans Bank. Chemical became TCF and Hans became part of Credit Union One. And we also have a bank name change. People's Trust Credit Union is now People Driven Credit Union. And we have one addition, new addition to the list of banks is North Star Bank. On brokerage firms list, there were two firms that had changes in their structure. There was Hudson Shockey Early and Company is now Huntington Securities. And SunTrust Robinson Humphrey is now Truist Securities. So I asked the body to approve the update to our depository resolution. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you want to make that motion?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the annual update of the depository resolution as presented by the Treasurer.
Councilwoman Banks, support?
Thank you. It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the annual update of the depository resolution as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Annual update of the depository resolution has been approved?
And next, we have our annual update for our city investment policy. And every month, we have a Treasury Report, which I bring before the Investment Committee, for the Council Finance Committee chaired by Councilman Brightwell. And we have a very, you know, thorough discussion about all the financials of, of the, of the city. And we talk about the performance of the investment portfolio and, and reports are prepared and they hopefully are being forwarded to the rest of the members of the council. I just want to let the council members have an update now that we're at the end of 2020. 2020 was a very good year financially for us. May have been a lot of tragic with COVID and everything like that. But financially, the city has weathered financially very well in the investment markets. We have, the performance was 7.52% on our bond portfolio. That was the one-year performance for 2020. And currently, we have $73 million worth of bonds that we are yielding on that 2.41% is a coupon rate. And we purchased those for $69 million. So we have a full million unrealized capital gain on that. And it has a five-year duration. So that rate is locked in for five years at least with that. So that's very good on our long-term investments, which now especially since that time, interest rates have, right now are at historic lows. And we actually got to benefit from that by issuing our road bonds recently at a very, very attractive rate. And that also, we were able to lock in the interest rate on that for, for a 10-year time period pretty much. We issued out 10 years worth of bonds. And so that's a benefit for the city. This year's update for our investment policy, because of the interest rates right now at the banks being very low and interest rates on bonds being very low, it gives us very limited places that we can invest. Instead of tying down our money for a longer term at lower rates, we're looking to have flexibility. The council has worked with us in the past, and we've been able to benefit very well for the city's balances to be able to utilize the Oakland County local government investment pool. It's managed by the Oakland County Treasurer Department, and they have a team over there that are dedicated for these investments. And they have over $1 billion worth of investments that they are managing. We currently are at 50% as our limited on, on the investments. And we, because right now checking accounts and savings accounts are paying minimal, minimal interest rates, we're earning a much more attractive rate over there with daily liquidity. Anytime we ever need our funds, we can take it out on, within a day's notice, as well as also putting in funds. We were able to put in, add to our balances anytime we need to. And the money is flowing back and forth and goes very well. Everything is documented and has worked out very, very well for, for us. And we've been able to increase our performance because of this. So the request is to be able, especially now with, in the interim, with the interest rates being so low, flexibility to allow for above the 50% limit. And so this way, we shouldn't have a limit on that and to give us the flexibility to utilize the local government investment pool from Oakland County. Other than that, the policy has been reviewed by the Association of Public Treasurers, United States and Canada, and has received awards from them in the past. And, and we come before council with an annual update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the planner, if you're still on?
Yeah, I just, I just need to ask for an approval on the investment policy. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Council?
Um, I have a question, please.
Okay, question?
Um, yes, Councilwoman Banks, to our city treasurer. I, I heard you as to why we want to invest 100% of our portfolio with Oakland County. But I've always been taught that you don't put all of your eggs in one basket. Did you say the finance committee reviewed this item? So, I mean, 50% seems fine, 75% seems fine. But to invest 100%, you know, what if something happens with their investment group and things, you know, go south? I mean, that's 100% of our money.
I, I agree with you, Councilwoman Banks. And it's something which, it's not that we're going to be putting 100% of our money there at all. Right now, for example, like I've mentioned, we have $73 million locked away for over five years right now in, in bonds that are, it's a very diversified portfolio ourselves. Their portfolio is also very diversified. And we get updates on them and we have, we also monitor them as well through our, through our consultants. They, we, we actually have two sets of consultants. We have Robinson Capital as well as also ANCO. And part of their mandate at ANCO is to monitor the Oakland County investment pool to make sure that they're compliant. They're, they have to follow state rule of Public Act 20, which limits what the investments has to be, quality, safe investments that are backed by government bodies that are, and they have a diversified portfolio. They can't put all their eggs in one basket as well. So it's a very diversified portfolio of over a billion dollars. So God forbid, if one investment went bad, it's such a minor fraction of the entire portfolio. This just takes away the restrictions, gives us the flexibility when, let's say, for example, taxes come in and we get a surplus of funds coming in, in the interim, until we can find more suitable investments, until interest rates are picking up. That's the safe haven, you might say, for our funds.
Um, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the Treasurer? Okay, thank you. Mr. Crowe?
Yes, good evening. I just want to reiterate.
We, we, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilman Brightwell. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the annual update of the city investment policy.
Support.
Support.
Okay. It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the annual update of the city's investment policy. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Annual update of city investment policy has been approved?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Brightwell. Now, Mr. Crowe, we'll go to you.
Good evening again. I, I just wanted to mention to council that as part of your introduction of ordinance number 1731, we will need to make some minor amendments to the zoning ordinance as well as adopting design standards, which we will bring forward through our process and back to council for adoption as part of the Small Box Retail Amendments and some minor amendments to Woodland Wetlands ordinance. So all, all of these items will be back in front of you in the next two to three months. Also, I wanted to mention that since you've authorized our letter of intent, we will start to send notification to all adjacent communities, registered utilities and regional agencies on the master plan update. We hope to launch our public input website starting February 1st, and more details will be provided as we get closer to that date. And then finally, under enactment of ordinance, council will be enacting the PZR ODB 20-001, the Res zoning Request of Contour Development, to amend the ODB and adopt the master development plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Is the assessor on? How about the engineer? Okay, hearing none. Do we have anything to be scheduled? No?
We asked a segment of 1730?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we enact ordinance 1730.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support, Councilwoman Banks.
Okay. It's been motioned by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the enactment of ordinance 1730 for PZR ODD 20-0001. Madam Clerk, would you please read, call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
The enactment of ordinance 1730, PZR ODD 20-001, has been adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, may I have a motion for closed session?
Madam President, I'm over that. We go into closed session.
Support?
It's been motioned by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for us to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Uh, just a matter of procedure, I just need one of the council members, Dr. Cruz, to specify what are we going into closed session for, so the case?
Yeah, okay. I'd like to amend that emotion, that motion then, to go to closed session for the discussion of Victoria Brown, personal representative of Ralph Brown Estates versus Woolen and City of Southfield at all.
Support, Councilwoman Banks?
Well, he was just making, verbalizing his, um...
Yeah, we need Brightwell to accept that.
I'm sorry.
Support, I accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we have been motioned by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for us to go into closed session for the discussion of Victoria Brown, personal representative of Ralph Brown Estate versus Woolen, City of Southfield, case number 15-52431. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Motion to go into closed session for Victoria Brown, personal representative of Ralph Brown Estate versus Woolen, City of Southfield, UTR, case number 15-52431, Oakland County Circuit Court, has been adopted. Council, you should have previously received the invitation for the closed session on Friday.
Okay, so we'll reconvene in about five minutes or as soon as we can dial in?
Yes, you can, I, I changed, you can recon, reconvene to the other outlet in five minutes. It's scheduled to start in five minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. We'll reconvene at the closed session in about five minutes.